Good evening, everybody, and welcome to -- this is going to not be a Board of Supervisors meeting, but a strategic assessment of East Brandywine Township. On February 1st, the Board of Supervisors initiated -- first of all, let me apologize. I'm Kyle Scribner, the Township Supervisor Chairman. On February 1st, the Board of Supervisors initiated an overall assessment of the state of affairs for East Brandywine Township. The intent of the study was to provide township leadership and an unbiased overview of a full range of external and internal aspects of East Brandywine, including, but not limited to, our municipal operations, our institutional culture, township committees and commissions, volunteerism, public works, fire and police, traffic, historical sites, recreation, open space, trails, and communication. Leading the study are Richard Palmerhansson, co-senior partner in the Strategy Group Inc., a strategy consultant agency and executive leadership coaching organization, and Ray Halverson, senior partner of Halverson Associates LLC. Richard and Ray gained their expertise in municipal leadership arenas as part of their service for West Town and West Goshen Townships. Forty-plus years of government service between the two of them, and with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you guys to run the show.
Thanks, Kyle.
Our mandate from the board was to bring, and is to bring, a clear-eyed, candid, unbiased view assessing where East Brandywine is as a township today, and help to strategically position it for the next five years. Tonight is an integral step in this multi-phase strategy project, integral as this is your opportunity to weigh in with your thoughts, opinions, and perspectives. Our process: Ray and I have benefited from the information we've gleaned from hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of pages of documents we've reviewed, and the insights from more than seventy interviews that we've conducted to date with a wide-ranging group of people, including, but not limited to, your Board of Supervisors, past and present, commission and committee leadership volunteers, the township management, the consultants who provide consulting services for East Brandywine, township legal counsel, legal and other representatives of the East Brandywine Municipal Authority, a strategic focus group of residents and commercial owners, recreation organization leadership, landowners, pension and money management advisors, those who serve East Brandywine, and others, the fire department, the police department, the public works department, the leadership of the Chester County Economic Development Council, as well as several township managers from other Chester County townships. We've asked questions; we've listened intently to the responses, responses which often is not revealed viewpoints very strongly held, at times even highly emotional. Whilst we've listened intently, those who've been interviewed to date can attest to our candid devil's advocacy approach in probing the replies and the comments we've heard for justification, rationale, and reasoning. Tonight's meeting is not for Ray and I to opine on the issues, concerns, thoughts, and suggestions we've heard to date, for in fact to do so would discount the value of this meeting. Whereat, we trust we will learn even more about some of the key issues and the subject matters that came up most frequently during the interviews to date. A couple of points for your consideration up front. First, that there are strongly-held views on a number of subjects is not a surprise at all to Ray and myself, and may likely come as no surprise to you, for that is to be expected from the stakeholders in any enterprise, whether it be for-profit or not-for-profit, especially in enterprise such as, in this case, a municipality that has, and still is, and will continue to experience the explosive growth that personifies East Brandywine. With explosive growth comes change in many dimensions, and with change come inherently questions and challenges, such as, again, in this case, for East Brandywine, which for so long, until quite recently, seemed to be a bucolic farming rural community comprised for those who lived here for many decades, and now what most characterize instead is a bedroom community, quickly filling up with a few thousand homes of various types. And with such a quick explosive growth, bringing with it new population demographics ranging from age groups to composition, with each of those new arrivals bringing her and his respective perspectives and expectations based on where they came from and why they chose East Brandywine. And where there are, as there undoubtedly always are, difference in perspectives and expectations, they can be even more accentuated, as they were, by a highly contentious political campaign. Edmund Burke could have just as easily been referring to East Brandywine when he wrote that "A state without the means for change is a state without the means for its own self-preservation." For wherever and whenever there's change, it's no secret that change of any kind brings with it challenges and questions about so many things. Questions such as: From how and by whom were decisions made before, and how and by whom will and should decisions be made in the future? Questions such as: How do the decisions and the reasoning behind those, up to now, when East Brandywine was a different type of community, stand up in a different era for a township that will almost have tripled its size in relatively short period of time? Questions such as: Are the administrative management skillsets and the governance mindset that worked well for a small farming and rural community still appropriate for a municipality that has changed as dramatically as has East Brandywine? In short, will what worked for East Brandywine for years, from its vision to past priorities, from its financial and human resources management, to its relationships with and to all of its stakeholders, especially with its residents, will whatever it and they may have been that got East Brandywine to where it's evolved today still be as effective in the future? Speaking for myself, I do anticipate some passionate expressions of strongly-held views this evening. Indeed, if there are none, I'd suggest this would have been an opportunity badly missed. But to be taken seriously, strongly-held viewpoints need must stand up to two core benchmarks. One: Are the strongly-held viewpoints supported with strong reasoning that intends to convince others, or are they just a reflection of just spouting off? Two: Feel free to come in, folks. Last person in brings the hot dogs. Two: Are the strongly-held viewpoints delivered in such a manner that reflects respect and courtesy for others, reflecting what the poet Goethe so eloquently wrote long ago, that if you treat others as if they were what they ought to become, he helped them become what they're capable of being? Simply put, and I've been candid here, loud, vexatious, bludgeoning, even threatening verbal sarcastic bomb-throwing does no one any good. It reflects more a deceded anger, or resentment, or even the lack of confidence that maybe to offer the same views respectfully will not be convincing. Such behavior will not be tolerated tonight. Your fellow residents deserve better. And should such behavior raise its ugly head and become disruptive, then I'll ask the police to deal with it accordingly. One other pertinent point: If anyone came here to advocate or lobby for or against a specific development, that is not the purpose of tonight's program. For I was remiss not to say something that Ray and I started every one of our interviews to date. This is not a land development initiative. Rather, it is a much wider-range strategy project that, as you will soon learn, covers a broad area of subject matters. If anyone has opinions about a specific development, take it up with your planning commission and your Board of Supervisors. This isn't the forum for such discussion. Now, let me tell you about tonight's program. A couple of rules of the road for tonight, one of which I touched on earlier. Everyone is encouraged to participate tonight, and I really do expect you to, and would ask you to, in what will be a very different, interactive type of meeting. Your candor is sought; your passionate viewpoints welcome, but to be productive, the participation must be civil. Secondly, this is a public town hall meeting, so the role of the board and the township manager management will be limited to listening. They're not to ask questions; they're not to give answers; they're not to comment. This is the public's meeting. Third, I'm about to divide you into random groups, which as soon as we formally commence, we will ask you to get together, get organized with, and introduce yourselves and need be as quickly as possible. So let me do that right now. I'm going to take -- all right, need your attention. Excuse me. Now, what I want to do is that you're going to call your group number one, group number two, group number three, group number four, group number five, and is there any group back there? Okay, group number six. The stragglers are six. All right, please listen to your instructions. Please listen to your instructions. Two of you in each group will chronicle various comments in response to questions that I'm going to ask you to deal with. The person who's acting as a scribe need not write everything down, but there are going to be some obvious questions. Folks, hey, folks, if you don't listen to the instructions, you talk to yourselves, you're not going to listen, okay? I'm going to give you a series of questions. I'm going to give it to you one at a time. I want two people, if you have two pads of paper, or one person who's doing it if you only have one pad of paper, just record what people say in response to my question. We're going to try to cover as much as possible tonight. What we're interested in your viewpoints, we're interested in your thought process, but because we're going to be moving from one subject to another subject matter as quickly as possible, I want your comments to be quick, candid, and crisp, but to hold nothing back, and you'll understand based on the subject matters we get to. As was mentioned earlier, we've asked many questions and listened intently to what has been said, from which a number of common strategic themes have surfaced that deserve your feedback, insights, and opinions. So as I said, we wish to cover as many as possible, yet we want to keep the meeting to a reasonable time. So once the group starts discussing a specific subject matter, please keep all of your comments quick, short, and candid, okay? So here's your first question. When you think about East Brandywine today, and you think about East Brandywine for the next five years, tell your colleagues what you feel are East Brandywine's two biggest strengths. What are the two biggest strengths that personify or characterize East Brandywine today, particularly as you think about over the next five years? Please talk among yourselves. All right, please stop. Please stop. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a lot to get through. Group number one, comments. Just feed us back. Doesn't matter, either one of you.
A strength is open space, rural character of our township. Another one is the proximity to highways, infrastructure, restaurants, the train.
Ladies and gentlemen, you will get nothing from your colleagues, your fellow residents, if you're all talking while she's speaking. Please respect each other.
Two strengths: Open space, rural character of our township. And the second one that we agreed on was proximity to highways, infrastructure, restaurants, the train, et cetera.
All right. Group number two. Hold on a second.
We said, we came up with five. Do we have to have only two?
Yeah.
Oh. Parks, and the level of volunteerism that's in the community.
Ma'am?
Leadership, and money, financial strength.
You're part of the same group?
Yes.
Interesting. Group three?
We have open space and volunteerism slash sense of community.
Two.
Safety because of the great police department and fire departments, and reasonable, stable taxes.
Five, group five?
We have historical resources.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Yeah, you do, because we need to record it.
Okay, we have historical resources with open spaces and community involvement, emergency services, and we have a third one.
No. You got two. No. Is there a group six? That's it?
We have the group five A.
Okay.
We have location, as well as school district.
Yes, ma'am.
We also said open space, parks, clean air. We also said expertise in management and land use development.
We had others.
Okay. That's it? Okay. Okay, next one. Your two biggest weaknesses today as a township, as well as today and looking over the next five years. What are the two biggest weaknesses? You've got three minutes. All right, please stop. Please stop. Ladies and gentlemen, please stop. Side conversations, please put a halt to them. We'll start over here with this lady, if you come here, and with this gentleman. Two weaknesses. I'll hold on.
Traffic and the pace of development.
Okay, next group.
We have traffic and community engagement, communication.
Got it. Traffic and community engagement slash communication. Over here, who has -- oh, no, come back.
We had traffic, expertise when dealing with developers, and no village center plan.
That's three. Okay. You got two. I agree, yeah. All right. Yes, ma'am.
Traffic and sustainable funding based on the growth of the community, which the funding is in past monies right now.
Thank you. Next. Hold on a second.
We'll mirror traffic, and we said growth, but not just here, of our surrounding communities that'll affect us.
Got it. All right. Go here.
Traffic and growth, and there's a perception of old versus new. There's a perception where there's conflict between the views of people that have been here for some time and people that are moving in. It's not necessarily real, but it's a perception that affects the relationships.
Got it. Over here, ma'am?
Poor traffic management strategy and poor retail business and growth strategy. It's not business-friendly.
Not business-friendly. Any other groups? Or did I get them all? Next one, you got a little more time. You get five minutes. What is, as you think of East Brandywine over the next five years? Draw a picture in words of your respective vision for what East Brandywine is going to be five years from now. You have five minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, hello? I've been asked a very good question. Is this wishful thinking, as in what you would like East Brandywine to be, or where you think East Brandywine is headed? So answer both questions. What do you think, based on where it's going now, five years from now, where is East Brandywine headed, and what would you like East Brandywine to be instead, if there is a difference? Please stop. Please stop. On subject matters like these, you can go on for hours. I appreciate you trying to do this in five minutes. So this time, I'm going to go to this lady first. Who's in this -- I need the note taker. This sir.
All right, so basically anticipate more people, more congestion, more traffic, and would like to see, you know, within the next five years, a more condensing of a sort of village and sort of focal point to allow to manage it.
Did you -- part of the same group? Okay, what's your answer?
The vision. Okay. We talked about community planning with the roads, and the safety of the roads, and the efficiency of the roads. That's our --
That's your vision?
Yeah, that's our vision, that we would like community planning for the safe.
And what's your vision of it today?
Our vision of it today, that it's just getting more and more congested.
We want a small village atmosphere and open space maintained. A small village atmosphere and open space maintained.
Over there, don't say it yet, wait till I get there. Vision.
The vision first, okay? That it be a bucolic village with a balance between residence, retail, and open space. And the reality, what we fear, excellent, which could be good and bad. Lot more development and businesses, but great place to live, and there's a lot of shopping and restaurants.
Over here, sir.
Realistic views. More housing and more traffic issues. Wishful thinking, selective, controlled, commercial development to bring in more commercial tax dollars and services, and enticement of existing farms to be preserved as open space.
And I think we have one more, right over here. Few more, sorry.
The current vision, the way things are, is that it will be overcrowded, overdeveloped, too much retail, and strained services. Going forward, what we'd like to see is more planning, preservation of open space, encourage family-owned businesses to offset taxes, similar to what they just said, and keep the historical structure within the township.
And the last group, hands up, please. Yes, sir. You want to come forward? Don't be shy.
Well, just parrot whatever everybody else said. More people, more strain on resources, but what I didn't hear was more strain on natural resources. Like, a lot of people still have wells here, and the aquifer's going to be drawn down. If you have a shallow well, for example, you're going to be facing a pretty big bill to put another well in, and things like that. So, you know, water, sewage, wells, things like that, and the need for more services as these people populate more. So infrastructure support, and I wrote down build a wall, but I don't really want to do that.
Next question. You have four minutes for this one. It's divided into different, sort of different, within one subject matter, there's some mini subjects, and I'll try to be specific. What is your view about the township resident communications? This includes the website, the mile marker, and then township resident communications with township officials. You've got four minutes. Yes. What is your view about the nature of the township resident communications? The website, the mile marker, and with township officials? Please stop. Please stop. Please stop. We'll start here.
We feel the website is excellent, and also the mile marker. Yeah, that is the communication.
Some people have issues. It's too slow, it's too this, it's too that, but basically, the information we feel is okay.
Okay, next. Over here, ma'am?
Hi. We talked about improving communication with the township supervisors, that they need to be more transparent, and they're here to serve the community.
And the mile marker, and --
We didn't even discuss.
Over here, ma'am?
We thought the website's fine, the mile marker's fine, but the caveat that we're not real familiar with what other townships and municipalities do, so maybe they can be improved, but we don't know. But we're satisfied with them. Terms of communication with the residents, we thought it could be improved, by example, for having online surveys periodically, or things like that.
Sir? Ma'am? How are you?
We think it was outstanding. We love the website, and also the mile marker, and I've called a lot of other townships, municipalities, and all you get are numbers to press. And when I call here, I always get a person.
And that's your view. What about your group? Was the group consensus?
It's better to school districts.
You're in the school. Here, communications.
But we also all --
Hey, 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 sorry. Hate to be a schoolteacher here.
We all agreed that we're all happy with the website, the mile marker. That's all good. It's kind of a mixed bag as to whether we think communication with township management is acceptable or not. Some of us are not happy, some of us are.
Okay. Over here.
We ranked the website middle of the road. The feeling was that the information is there. It's pretty comprehensive, and the information is good. There's some frustration here in this group, that it's not intuitive, and it's hard to find the information. The mile marker, we ranked that a four or five, a strong publication.
Four or five out of a hundred?
Out of five, on a scale of one to five, sorry. And communication with township officials, three out of five, a middle of the road.
Which groups have I missed? Okay? I'll be right there.
Yeah, I wonder who's from the mile marker.
Yes, we also ranked the mile marker as very high. Has nothing to do with the editor being in our group. We didn't know, actually, we didn't know that before we discovered that, as we were talking about it. The website is very good. Similar themes, the township listens and responds. Whether you call, whether you come here in person, you always get an answer. We had the exact same feedback here. We all wanted to encourage keeping up a variety forms of communication. Maybe not everybody's on Facebook. Good for you if you're not. And one thing for improvement, maybe a little bit of a minor thing, but still, communication about trash collection, if there are changes maybe to do with weather, it can be a little spotty.
I miss any other group? That's it? Next question. This one should be quick. Next question. You have two minutes as a group. Just two minutes as a group. When I say Guthrie'sville Village Master Plan, in one sentence, what is your opinion of it? You've got two minutes. Please stop. Please stop. Folks, please stop. Thank you. Diane? Hey? Please stop. Guthrie'sville Village.
The very first reaction from a majority of our group is, is there a plan? And then those who do know that there is a plan said they looked at it, it needs to be better explained, they'd like to see it accelerated, and really explain what it is.
Next. Yes, sir.
It's a spotty or limited understanding of the details.
At some level, maybe poorly conceived, some of the early pieces of it seem not to be going that well.
Next.
We're not real familiar with it, but we would hope that it follows the Eagleville model, which we think is a very successful village kind of concept.
Next. Yes, sir.
What is the status of it, and then?
Hey, hey, hold on. Listen, after your group's voice and opinion, please give other people respect that they gave you.
Some of us are aware of it, but we don't know what the status of it is, and also a question came up, is it enforceable? Because it looks like there's been already, you know, not a violation of it, but a permutation away from it that wasn't part of the plan.
With 322 going through it, our feelings were, it's just not a village atmosphere.
Over here. Yes, sir?
We had a list of reactions. Horrible, may or may not happen, pipe dream, sounds good but doable, question mark, and lack of knowledge communication. So a lot of these reactions aren't based in understanding the full aspect of the plan. So more, information needs to be communicated to really better understand it.
Appreciate it. And over here, ma'am? Speak loud.
We thought the concept of a village in Guthrie'sville is a good one. However, there was poor planning, it wasn't implemented, it was constantly changing, it did not approach the stakeholders, the landowners, a number of them, and also, there's no plan to work with PennDOT for funding, which is the biggest problem in implementing the village.
I miss a group? Nope. Next subject matter. What is your view about what this township has done about preserving open space? Before I finish, again, first, what's your view about what the township has done so far about preserving open space? That being said, when you think about the township over the next That being said, when you think about the township over the next five years, and also your comments about open space over the next five years. So, there's open space up to now, and then as you think about the future of the township, open space over the next five years. You've got three minutes. Please stop. Please stop. Please stop. Thank you. We'll start with this gentleman here. Open space.
I think overall, folks are happy with it, definitely could use more in the next five years, but really want to understand where that all is, to sort of publicize it, and identify, is there a plan or a goal for what the overall vision's going to be?
Diane? Or this gentleman? What's your name? Mike?
Likewise, overall, very pleased with the results of the open plan, open space planning, and, and the results of reserving those places, supporting the extra eighth of a percent tax to, to do that. For the five years, like to see the, the Bonneville Mill Park completed, and would like to just see what, have a, have, see what the five-year plan is to, to balance the development with open space.
Going this direction over here.
I agree, talked about that balance, too, of open space and, and plan community development with, and tying into road, road planning at the same time. I think in general, we have members that knew, did know a lot about the open space, some of us didn't, although I think the open space for some of the planned communities has suffered, and not been there, actually. So, I think there's areas where we have great open space that came out, and then areas where there's poor open space planning.
Over here, ma'am?
I think overall, everybody's happy...
I need to speak louder.
Everybody overall is happy with the open space that we have now, and they think development is going to happen, but we need to ensure that open space is part of, you know, these developments and what have you. And people want sidewalks.
Want sidewalks. Which one of you? Hey, folks?
We feel it now, it's excellent. In the future, about the only property left is the McCoslin farm. I hope that it becomes open space.
Yeah, which is that, we talked about what's, what is the plan going forward? You know, is there some type of a ratio we're going to try to maintain between development and open space, that type of thing?
Over here. I notice nobody else wants to be a spokesperson.
Basically, everyone's happy that their open space is being preserved, there should be more of it, and however, they should be more transparent as to where it is, I mean, why isn't it up on the website? How many acres, you know? What did they spend? That kind of thing. In the future, they would like to do more, including the McCoslin farm, but also allow for commercial development.
And have I missed anybody? I missed you.
We, we feel that there was a lot of foresight in starting the open space program as early as the supervisors started it, and that's very appreciated, and we think it's a great program. Looking forward, we need to keep a balance between open space and controlled commercial development, and cluster that commercial development.
I miss anybody? All right, next question. Obviously, a lot has been told, said to us. A lot has been said to us during our interviews about commercial development. And just leave it at, with the following, Ray and I have probably heard every opinion on all sides of commercial development. But as you think about East Brandywine over the next five years, as in your group, what are the pros and cons? I don't care if you come up with one pro, one con, or two pros and two cons, but give us a balanced view. What's the argument for commercial development for East Brandywine? And what's the, what's the view on no commercial development for East Brandywine? And before you begin, let me say to you that we've heard both extremes. We don't have commercial development to speak of, and we're never going to have commercial development to speak of. We've heard that, well, there was good, some good opportunities that were presented, but they were killed by the powers that be, and they never happened. There are those who are saying commercial development is needed for what is called ratables, which is tax-based dollars, and others say is that we're doing okay as it is, and we don't want to become whatever the next, you name it. Okay? This one, you got five minutes. What are the pros and cons of commercial development over the next five years? Please stop. Please stop. Look, before, before we go further, I've had a number of people ask me, how long more are we going to go through these questions? Okay? I understand how tough it is, and I'm moving you as quickly as possible for two reasons, your self-preservation and my survival. Okay? But this is the only opportunity we get to go through a session like this, and I'm not blowing smoke when I say to you that your participation has been terrific so far. So, here's what I've said. I'm going to try to get through as many questions as I can, and I'd say over the next 20 to 30 minutes, that's it. Then we're going to tell you about the rest of the process and make a couple of comments. I will leave you with one other thought. At the, the very last question that you're going to be asked, is a question that everyone has been asked in all the one-on-one interviews, and the one on group interviews, and it will be very thought-provoking, and so therefore, when we get to that, you'll understand why I'm going to give you a little bit more time for it. Okay? So, let's go with this gentleman here.
Okay. Pros, we have a list, tax revenue, convenience for business types, keeping the money local. If done right, it can help with property values.
And cons?
I've not done the pros yet.
You only got two.
The intangibles of networking, bringing people into the community that...
How much is this, is you saying it versus the group?
This is the group, this is the entire group. Cons, complicates traffic patterns, larger vehicles related to business, not much revenue from mom-and-pop shops, increased stress on, on police and fire, and stress on infrastructure.
Okay, next group. Over here, who's got it? Ma'am? Will you listen to the instructions better than he did?
Okay, I'm going to make my pro. The pro is shopping convenience for ratables, especially if it's family-owned businesses and not big-box stores. The cons is, is potential for ugly development, traffic congestion, and loss of community character.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Is it going to be you this time? Hold on, hold on.
Pro, pros would be additional services, but when we kind of went through the groups and what kind of additional services would you want, I mean, the only one that came up was Dave wanted a zip line in the park. And you'd get an increase in, increase in the tax base, and con would be traffic and potential crime increase.
Okay. You comfortable with this? All right, next group. Hold on a second. Yes, ma'am?
Pro is services for residents, tax base and convenience. Con is traffic congestion and crime.
Next.
I think we ended up with a balance that, looking at the pros and cons, that we didn't think it was worthwhile, except for maybe some, some additional essential services.
Essential services, okay. Did you guys define essential services?
Well, personal services, like we already said.
Over here, Diane?
We talked about the pros being ratables, you know, keeping taxes low, convenience, and considering how office manufacturing options could work in our favor. The cons would be for commercial, retail would be traffic, and we don't want to become an urban center.
And one more over here.
Same stuff, pros, business taxes, convenience, some local jobs, cons, traffic, and then noise and light pollution in the area.
Did I miss a group? Missed a group? All right, next question, and it's along the same lines, but now you're going to have to decide the choices. Decide priorities. Open space? Historical preservation? Commercial development? Residential development? As you think about the next five years. Open space? Historical preservation? Commercial development? Residential development? You've got four minutes. Please stop. Stop. All right.
We, we didn't really rank them in terms of one to four. We decided that, we decided that open space is adequately taken care of, there's not much left to historically preserve that isn't being preserved. We thought that in terms of priorities, we should focus on small, commercial development, and affordable housing.
Define affordable housing.
We were talking starter houses, young families can come and afford a house to live in this, this township.
Over here.
Our top vote was still for open space, second was historical preservation, and no one was sure what they wanted to vote, if they wanted to vote at all for either commercial or residential, but if it was for residential, well-planned residential.
Different group, by now.
Yeah, so, so we, it got a little divisive, a little twisted up, but ultimately, we sort of got to, there's a priority on commercial development, but with a balancing, you know, incorporating historical preservation and open space together to build it.
Want to describe, or can somebody explain that?
Use some of the historical buildings for something that has a purpose, instead of standing empty, you know?
Over here. Yes, sir.
Yeah, we had some bouncing back and forth of our own, but I think we landed on open space preservation first, historical preservation second, commercial development followed by residential development, and we also agreed they're intertwined.
That was your group? All right, and Jim? Hold on a second.
Commercial, or, open space, historical preservation, residential development, commercial development in that order.
Okay, did I miss a group? Over here. They still have you as a spokesperson.
We, we just polled everyone, and open space was first, commercial development second, historic preservation third, and resident fourth.
Do that one more time.
Open space development was first, commercial development second, historic preservation third, residential development fourth.
Thank you. Any, I miss any other groups? Okay. Coming, which, do I get you today, or this gentleman? Same.
One open, two historical, three residential, four commercial.
Which was the group that didn't listen? This is the way you answer a question. I just want to make sure, okay? All right, next. This is really an interesting question, because many are proud of the accommodation that has been made for recreation, especially for young people. Your parks is an example. Some say that with what will be almost a times a thousand kids, there will be a need to expand the recreational area. And we've had people say to us, wait a second, that's, they already, there's enough space being used for recreation in parks. So, take the question any way you wish to, but think about East Brandywine over the next five years. Recreation slash parks? Expand them? Look for more property, more land? Or is there enough there already? You've got three minutes. Please stop. We just have a few more questions to go, so I'm going to try to do this. Ma'am? She gave, she gave up on me.
We're saying it's adequate.
I said that. Because you're a great sport, that's why.
We feel that parking wreck is adequate as it is now.
We're all, we all agree we're in favor of, of sports opportunities for children and youth, but perhaps we could expand it by not having another soccer league, but by having a different sport that may play at a different time of year.
Got it. Over here.
We can limit the participation by, of the kids by limiting it to just township residents, and then also, a lot of the new developments going in are not allowing for recreational space. They would rather pay the fee in lieu of, so we're losing out there.
Same deal, well, we, we said more people, you're going to need more park space, and then there's a fee issue to, to work out that we have a problem with right now.
Um... Bye.
Yes, we, we said that we thought the township needed more parks with the following caveats, that new development should be required to have playgrounds within, basketball courts with whatever, and that new parks should not be all athletic fields, they could be like Bell Tavern Park, or, can't think of the one down on Lloyd Road, where it's just, it's not organized athletics, it's just where you can go and play.
With regard to more park space for recreational sports like soccer and baseball, it's really unclear, it's hard to, to give a recommendation on that without understanding how the fields are currently used. For example, I know that the EBYA baseball is fading, and there's ball fields that aren't being used, whereas the soccer program's exploding, so it might be just a matter of adjusting the usage of the park for those various sports. The other comment that came up in our discussions was that we should be a little bit more hard line with the developers in creating recreational space within their communities versus allowing them to do the fee in lieu of...
Y'all agree? Over here, Diane? Hold on a second.
We also said to enhance and not to expand, and just to utilize the space we currently have, adjusting it according to what the needs are of the current youth coming through, and we also agree that the communities should have recreation areas within them.
I miss a group? No? Did I get you? Hold on a second. Same thing you said?
Don't, don't need more, more space, but enhance what we have.
I had the same thing, and also echoed that any new communities have recreational, clearly that there would be recreational areas designated within the communities.
Next question, you have one minute, because what I'm looking for here is almost word association, and don't be intimidated by the fact that some of the members of the, the word-associated group are here. When I say the police department, we'd like your comments about the police department, you have one minute as a group. Please stop. Please stop. Please stop. Okay? Notwithstanding what your answers may be, I do want to publicly thank the police department and the fire department for their participation in this project. Anybody's been pulled over by the, by the police, please identify yourselves, and Luke will, got his camera and watch, okay? Yes, sir?
I think overall, we're pleased, but it should be sized accordingly to population.
And is the inference there that it's not sized accordingly to the population?
As the population fluctuates, if it grows, then, you know, the police department needs to adjust.
Over here. This lady's now my friend again.
We thought the police department is terrific, but we didn't, we looked at it from a service perspective, not whether or not it's overstaffed or the appropriate size.
Over here.
We pretty much echo what was said, same thing, we didn't look at whether the size of it necessarily.
Over here.
Effective and excellent, we're pleased.
Effective and excellent?
Our words were superb, responsive, courteous, excellent, professional. There was one suggestion to police traffic within communities, developments, maybe try to reduce this speed within, within neighborhoods.
Missing a group? Did I miss anybody? Okay. Go ahead.
Quality of service, we rated it the five out of five. There's also a question mark on size, we're not sure exactly what the appropriate size.
Next question. You have two minutes. The fire department, but before you start, let me put it in the following context. Let's assume that as time goes on, there's going to be pressure... Let's assume that as time goes on, there's going to be pressure financially in terms of even tax revenues. I'm making this up, it's hypothetical. So perhaps there will be, you have to make decisions, and you're a member of the board of supervisors. And you have to decide, where do we have to take money from, if we have to take money from? Or do we raise taxes so that we can support the fire department? Or do you think the fire department is doing well as it is, and it doesn't need any more financial support? You kind of got the, the thrust of what I'm about, what I said about the fire department. You can take that any way you want. You have two minutes. Please stop. Please stop. Please stop. California. Relax. Please stop. Fire department. Ma'am.
They should be supported, but they need to prove what they, the money they need with the budget.
So I, I have to say I'm extremely biased, because I had a fire at my house. And they, they came incredibly quickly, put the fire out with minimal damage, so there's nothing short of outstanding, I can say about our fire department now. But I think for monetary support, and I think you probably need the fire department to weigh in on this, I don't know how their volunteerism is going. Is it trending up? Is it trending down? Is it flat? You know, will it ever get to the point where we need to start paying for our fire department's time? You know, and I think, my opinion, I don't know if my group shares it, but my opinion is you expect the fire department. And if you can't get the level of volunteerism, then you're going to have to pay for it.
What was the rest of the group feeling? Same? All right. Let's go here. Fire department.
We all are very grateful for our volunteer fire department. It's volunteer. And we are aware of the issue that the fire department, even though it's called East Brandywine, it also goes to fires in West Brandywine. And that our township tax dollars support it way more than West Brandywine Township. So maybe before we think about raising, giving more of our township tax dollars, we should put more effort into getting West Brandywine to pay more.
Our view is that our volunteer fire company is top-notch, extremely well-run, extremely well-equipped and trained. They're recognized regionally for their quality. It's a little bit difficult to understand whether they need more or less money. We currently have a fire tax. They have fundraiser, the chicken fundraiser, they have fireworks over at the community park now. So it's very hard to say. I, I think, we think things are fine the way they are now, as far as the township monetarily supporting them through taxes. But it's difficult to really give a, a good answer to that without understanding the finances.
Y'all agree? Okay. Did I miss a group?
You said that we need to know a little bit more, and for them to be a little bit more transparent than, or make it more apparent to us what, what their needs might be. But we talked about having just a flat fee like we do for our recycle, not necessarily be tied to taxes in particular, but having a flat fee so every family would contribute.
Okay. One other group? Any other groups? Hold on.
All right, similar. So this group thought pretty much be funded through taxes for what's required in order to manage the budget. Similar to that, garbage isn't optional, and fire department services isn't either.
You're a good group. And to the gentleman who had a fire in his house, I don't, how many people have had a fire in their house? I've had a fire in my house, and it's a life-changing experience. And God forbid you ever have to do it. And I was lucky, because in West Town, our fire department showed up and frankly saved my life. Just two more questions. This is an interesting one. And somebody raised it earlier, but in a different context. On volunteerism, when Ray and I took, took a look at, we were given all kinds of information by the township, and we appreciated what Scott and his group have given us, the management group. And I think Ray put it best, we had never worked in, either directly or indirectly, any municipality where the same names seemed to be on all the commissions or committees. There were a lot of repeat names. That's not an attack or criticism of the people who were participating, but it raised some questions for us. So we asked questions. And here's my question for you. First of all, how many here actually sit on committees or commissions? Hands up. How many do not? Okay. So my question to you is the following. Some say that the same names are on more than one of the same committees and commissions. Others say the residents generally don't, or don't want to volunteer. In other words, there's a small group of people who volunteer, and there's a whole heck of a lot of people who have an interest in the township, but don't want to volunteer. So my question to you, and maybe you could just give me two minutes of your group input, for those who don't volunteer, you're volunteering tonight, to your credit. But those who don't take a leadership role in participating on, on commissions and committees, I'd like to know why. It's not, please, it's not a criticism, it's simply, we're really trying to understand. And for those who don't participate, in answering the question, why? Is it because you feel that you just don't have the time? Is it because you feel you're not wanted? Is it you feel that there's not an interest in a specific area that the township has, a committee or commission on? So if you can get to sort of share your views on that, that'd be really helpful. Yes, sir?
I think your question is a little too narrow.
Too narrow?
Yes.
Okay, fire away.
Because there's a lot of people in this group
Yeah.
that volunteer at various, like Bonza Mill, or the Park Day we have every August, that are not on a commission.
Yeah.
And their names don't appear, but they volunteer every year.
Okay, then, then it's a fair comment then, okay? So let me take it further. I'll see if I can help, you can help me here. How many people volunteer for township events, but not specifically on commissions or committees? How many people don't volunteer on either township, commissions, or committees? Or even public events? Okay. So for those who don't volunteer, specifically on committees and commissions, in your group, can you have a brief discussion and tell us why? I want the feedback, if that helps us with our planning. All right, please stop. Please stop. Please stop. All right, let's do this one quickly. I'm sure there are 1,000 answers, but what's the answer on this one?
Overall, time, generally in some interest. And to some regard, folks are interested, but don't necessarily feel comfortable to come into sort of an unknown crowd and get engaged on their own.
Over here? No.
Some of our group volunteer, but a problem with not feeling welcomed is one of the comments. Yeah. And that's been, I've heard that from other people, too.
Next, over here.
Our group is very unrepresentative, because we skew fairly old over here. So some of the people feel they've already done their share, some people just don't want to bother, others have personal reasons not to. But a lot of it, I, my own feeling is, I think it's a very insular culture here. And I don't think that's good.
Next, over here. Oh, you're all volunteers? You're all volunteers?
We are, except, except one. But the, the comment was, they, they're not aware of the opportunities. Yes.
What does that, so what does that say to you?
Well, I think we need to have some type of, you know, like a volunteer day, where all the different volunteer groups and committees can be in here, or at the park. I think we do it on the park day. We do have some people out there. Where people can come and learn what's available.
Thank you. Over here.
We actually have two of us who are former members of a commission. We have people who are in, like auditing and zoning hearing board, and they don't get really called up to do much. And then we have people who are really busy with kids and businesses, or who volunteer at the church and EBYA, things like that.
Are there any other groups?
We had input that indicated time, and time being for personal reasons, or that they're already volunteering their time in other areas, and not, no interest in, in doing that. I will tell you, right now, advertisement, we have an open seat on the historical commission, if anybody's interested. And when that happens, it is well communicated on, on the website, in the mile marker, and yeah, in, on the board out front.
I'm going to stop there, Jim.
Sometimes seats will sit for many, many months before people come in, so.
Last one, over here. Yes, sir.
Similar themes, lack of time, maybe a mismatch of interest and/or expertise, volunteering elsewhere. But many people did want to make a point that it was not because they felt excluded, that that was not of, of theme or a feeling that they were given.
All right, last question. I was actually going to ask a question about traffic, but we have to keep this clean. So we'll move on. Okay? Take this question seriously. You're a member of the board of supervisors. And as with any organization or entity, for-profit or not-for-profit, you have to make decisions and priorities. As you think about East Brandywine over the next five years, there are probably 10,000 things, I'm exaggerating, there's probably 500 things that will need to be done, if you're a member of the board. There are probably 50 that are must-dos. There are 10 that are absolutely essential. But for you, you get one opportunity for East Brandywine. If there is only one thing that you think East Brandywine's board needs to do, as they think about the next five years, with the objective being that it will help, whatever that decision is, whatever that thing is, only one, it's literally the most strategic of priorities. What would the one thing be that you think would help Brandywine over the next five years to become the best it can be? Just one. You've got four minutes. Please stop. Please stop. Assume that we've heard a lot of answers in the 70-plus interviews we've conducted. But as you, as you think about prioritizing, it's something that's really helpful. So I'm going to start with this group. Which one of you guys? Okay?
Our group agreed that we should focus on safety issues, regulating speed, keeping our residents safe, and one person, and one fixing bridges. But anyway. There's a few of us in here having, but anyway, it's safety issues.
All right. Yes, sir.
All right, this is an interesting one. So we talked about evaluating the governing body structure of the township, which would include possibly expanding the board of five supervisors, and the transition from a second class to a first-class township.
Interesting. Yours?
We had said that the supervisors keep an open and probably creative mind as they approach further development decisions, and keeping in mind traffic and safety, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we had also suggested expanding the board of supervisors from three to five or seven, so that there'd be a variety of skill sets and backgrounds to help deal with the different kinds of problems.
Over here. Yes, sir.
We're much more holistic than the other suggestions. Living here, so like, maintain balance, maintain the quality and the, and why it's nice to live here. And there's no, like, just do these things, it's like a constant supervisory task.
Over here.
I think we were kind of holistic also, because you only asked us for one thing, and that would be, make it possible to have a town center in Guthrie'sville that allows for appropriate commercial development, in keeping with the historic and rural character of our township, which would require changing residential zoning to commercial, and traffic calming, and working with PennDOT to make changes in the highway, and, and working with residents in the town center to implement the intelligent plan to develop Guthrie'sville.
Interesting. Jim?
We had a holistic answer as well. Development of the right strategy for balancing commercial and residential development and traffic issues.
I miss anybody? First of all, I know it's been a long evening, and I thank you. I think on behalf of everybody, but includes the board of supervisors, management, also the residents, but the police and the fire department, we're grateful for your willingness to participate, and more importantly, to do so so constructively. People have always said to me, and I've done this all over the world, projects like this, for-for and not-for-profit, people have said that you cannot have a constructive conversation on what at times are difficult decisions. And it's interesting, was, if you're talking to a board of a hospital, or if you're talking to the residents of a municipality, it goes back to that quote from Gutt, that if you treat people as if they were what they ought to become, you help them become what they're capable of being. So first of all, thank you. If you want to know how we're going to get all of your, all those thoughts in, Ray's been keeping a record of what you've been saying. When we were hired, we were hired to look at the township with clear eyes. Neither of us is from East Brandywine. Frankly, in fairness, until I came to my first meeting here, I'd never been to East Brandywine. Which in a project like this, at least for one person myself, is helpful, because I walk in with no biases whatsoever. With all of the input that we've had, the next part, the next phase, is we're going to develop our written report. The written report is going to cover a, a great deal, because it deals with East Brandywine today, but obviously with a look at East Brandywine over the next five years. I'm the chairman of our planning commission in West Town, the township. I'm co-chair of the, we just finished our, our comp plan, which hadn't been done in 18 years. I can tell you that this kind of input and feedback is what is so helpful. Because you get the, in our role, we get the official comments, from whether it's, you know, the fire department, the police department, the board, management, whatever. And then you get the residents also with their points of view. People have asked me, am I going to give a presentation tonight about what we've learned? Not yet. Our mandate is to give that as we would. Our client is the board of supervisors of East Brandywine. So two things. We're going to prepare a written report, it'll take some time. And the other thing that we promised, we made a commitment to, not because we were asked, because we think this is a better way of approaching things. There will be issues that we're going to suggest to the township supervisors and say, on this and this matter, this subject, there may be one, two, or three potential conclusions and/or recommendations that we, that we'll propose. And we'll give them a choice. And it's up to them to make the decisions. Hence the question about, at the end, if you had to prioritize. The other thing that we've said is that there will be some subject matters that, you know, demand or deserve one recommendation, if we have that recommendation, which we will. And then when we do, we'll provide it, we'll provide it frankly. We've been asked the question, how will you know what we've done, and what we said, and what we've written? The report will eventually be, once it's been reviewed and discussed, and presumed voted on in some form or fashion by the board, it will be on the website. But I'll also make another comment, which I haven't suggested, talked to Jason, Kyle, or Jay about, that if you would like us to come back after we've done that, and after we've presented the report, as we must, to the board first, and we will do so in writing, if you would like us then to come back and make an oral presentation, it's not going to be fancy, it'll be like this, to you, the public, we're happy, we're happy to do that as well. We can answer questions that you might have. Those questions that we can't answer, we won't. You can see, Ray and I tend to be pretty direct about stuff, but if you want to hear it, we're happy to say it to you. There'll be things that you'll disagree with, there'll be things that you'll There'll be things that you'll disagree with, there'll be things that you'll wholeheartedly agree with. At the end of the day, our client is the township, and specifically the board, so ultimately, they'll make, they'll decide what works, what doesn't work, what do they agree with, what will they do? Once it's out of our hands, it's in their hands. But on that note, I want to thank you for your participation, and most importantly, drive carefully when you're going home. Take care. Good night.